Which is sent one nation under God into the middle of the world with whatever means the justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, which is fairly lengthy, but you've all had a chance to look at it.
Madam Chair, I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, now we have about three minutes because it's a continued public hearing that is not going to happen.
We're meeting with the city tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning?
Aye.
Yes, City Hall. Maybe?
Probably not. Well, then come on, I want to hit the trail.
Okay.
My mate.
Matt said there's not a lot, but. Be interesting. Hi, Brian.
Hello.
The next thing on our agenda at nine thirty-five is a continued public hearing for the Leonhart variance, which was for multiple family out on the sage prick area. I can open that public hearing, but I will tell you that we have received notice from Leonharts that they are withdrawing their application with the county as they are working through the annexation process with the city of Cody, and that is moving forward. So with that, I do need to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, is the is it, are we, are we closing this public hearing or is it a continuation?
Closing. They've asked it to, they've asked to withdraw their application with the county.
Madam Chair, I move with those public hearing.
Second.
I moved in second to the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. So that part is done. The next thing on our agenda I think we can move forward with. Brian, we have a retirement recognition for Kelly Myrick in Solid Waste Division.
And that's fair. I think just a doctor in Kelly and kind of an overview, he's been with the county a long time. It's not even have been predated when we were keeping records tonight. He would say third dying years, but I skipped for Bobby to two, we had thirty-seven, so. Bob Ryan isn't so long. And other hard years, landfill years, so. We're, you know, pretty impressive that he's figured it out long and, you know, we, he works, he's worked at both Cody and Towel Land, Cody even sent him through.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you did a little workout. But anyways, a lot of years with both landfills and then he's kind of works out there and everybody forgets about him, but don't complain, stuff, good job, and just gets it done. So we appreciate all this great effort.
Okay.
And it has been an honor for me to serve this. So, I would, as good as in the park. I am one. Ah, this is very nice. Thanks, guys. This is really nice. Thank you. Look.
Lloyd will pick that up.
I'm on the road here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And you appreciate.
Yeah.
Is it rude for us?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly, for the service.
That's it. It's the morning group of pepe's now, is that what you're going to do? Can you hang out at pepe's in the morning now?
Yeah, this guy's lying.
A good place.
Thanks, dear.
Thanks, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Agenda issue, we have some time here. We have till ten o'clock when that other public hearing was originally scheduled for Leonharts because we had both the variance and the SGP, so we've got about twenty minutes.
Can we just go over the library presentation right now?
Would you?
Are we, are we going to take break then?
Um, if that.
We don't have anything else.
That's fine. We couldn't really move anything in there. We looked and tried and so, yes, we're on a break. Oh. She came over and talked. We're still super good friends with Todd Ranks and see him every year, so she comes and she. Rob has attendance at the Hall once in a while during the games and went, a sucker. So I thought, I was coming up here, then I looked again, went, oh. It was Amy. She lives over in Sheridan, but that's.
Wish you had volleyball in your block, too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. She loves it. She had dinner with us in Vegas last year when we were down there with Joe and Dan. And she seemed like she'd play a couple of different locations, but not very often because, of course, we play on the southern state. She reps the inside.
This tall girl, this Lisa Powell, and that other.
Well, yeah, she's good. It's good. Yeah. Yeah, Lexi had to block her a few times.
He can spike it.
Yes, she can. Okay, it's, um, ten o'clock, so we'll get going again. The next thing on our agenda is a continued public hearing for Leonhart for the SGP. Again, Leonharts are moving the property. Again, Leonhart's are moving the property into the city of Cody through annexation, so there will be no need for the SUP. So I do need to open the public hearing so that we can again close the public hearing.
You need to take public comment before we close it, Madam Chair.
Not that I'm aware of.
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
I moved and seconded to close the public hearing for Leonhart SUP. Any further discussion? Are you done? All those in favor? Okay, so that subject is done as far as Park County at this time. So I think we're okay moving forward. So Anne, if you'd like to come up for the Powell Clark's Fork Conservation District annual update. Yeah.
You can just hand them me, I'll send them down, Anne. Thank you.
If you've got an extra, you give Molly one for the office, that would be very good.
We'll just briefly go through some of the. Stuff that we've been doing with Powell Clark's Fork and this one I'm going to call the good news and the bad news. Ah, yeah. The good news, education. We have been having a blast with our small acreage workshops and thank you again for the help. Uh, we did the first one of Wheat and Pest, roughly fifty people attended. And all I know is there wasn't a chair left in the building that we didn't have somebody in it and we had people standing. We purposely did that on a half day. Venue uh with the idea of not trying to take up a whole Saturday and discussions were strictly on irrigation. That's all it was. Um, we had Dan Larson came in, he did his talk on rights and responsibilities. Uh, all the irrigation district managers were there for the Powell site, which have been Hart Mountain, Wilwood and Shoshone. They introduced themselves and talked briefly about the landmass that they managed. And the miles of, and what I wanted the small acreage owners to to get was that they weren't the only customer. That there was, you know, seventy-five miles of this and this many miles of that. So they could kind of relate into what these guys are actually dealing with and how much help they had to do it. And I think that that was helpful and also. Uh, it's a little, it's a little harder to be snotty with somebody when you've shaken their hand and had a chance to visit with them. So uh, I think we were successful with that. And then I went a little bit off charts and had Megan Henry and use the uh. Uh, superintendent at the Powell golf course. Had him come and talk about what it's like to manage a big small acreage system, which is essentially what a golf course is. And he gave them some really good ideas, look for this, plan on that. And gave them some ideas of costs and something, because a lot of the people that we're seeing come in, they come in and they throw down half a million dollars on a house and they don't have a dime planned. For what it's going to take to irrigate. And so we're trying to get them to at least be aware of it and understand what they're dealing with. So that was our first one. Uh, that was funded by the WDA grant and you guys. And again, thank you so much. We had some great successes, successes. The biggest one is that we teamed up with the irrigation districts. We use their mail, they use their own mailing list. We did the printout of the invitation. And they nailed it. Which was probably the best turnout that we, this was the was wonderful turnout for the timeframe that we had, what we allowed. And we got a very good handshake going with the irrigation districts. The opportunities to improve is. We were doing this toward the end of COVID where printing in the office was hard. And so you're paying for printing and most of the printouts were color, which really drove the costs up. And so we learned, we've learned some opportunities, just don't spend the money on color printing. It's the information that's valuable, not the color print. So we're learning, we're learning as we go. The next thing we did was the big one. Uh, I think Lloyd was there at that. Uh, this was at the work at the fairgrounds, about hundred thirty people attended this, was all day. Uh, opportunity. Again, Dan was there, talked about irrigation rights and responsibilities. We had the Wheat and Pest for weed management. We had UW Extension with a great talk on grazing management. Uh, the irrigation districts were there to talk about rules for subdivisions and that sort of thing. Um, I talked a little bit about what to put, what we can do from the conservation district standpoint. NRCS was there to talk a little bit about cost assistance and at the very end of the. Training, there was another hour spent on training the water masters, since all of the. Uh, districts are now requiring a subdivision water master and that's an opportunity that we all have to improve on. I think it's a good idea that they have water masters. I think that we need to spend some money and some time because these guys were, hadn't. Really no clue. I was doing cleanup, picking up tables and chairs while they were having this meeting and listening in. And it was a little scary. Well, what, you know, what about this? I said, you guys, you need to have a subdivision meeting. You need to keep minutes so this thing can be legal. And you need to set some rules and some guidelines that are voted on. You didn't become God with the keys to the kingdom because you became the water master. And I said, you need to protect yourself that you don't get caught in that trap. And I think, I think there was, like I said, it was a little, it was a, I think we have an opportunity there. On a countywide basis to help the irrigation districts put together some sort of a realistic educational product program for their. Uh, water masters. I think that'd be helpful there to everybody, keep everybody out of trouble. Okay. Then we got going, we've got a level one study in process. This is with Wyoming Water Development Funds. Cody and Powell are working together on this. Uh, and they'll, will cover the areas of both districts. Uh, we've got, we were approved by the legislature in twenty twenty-two. Trihydro uh is our contractor, Scott Lee and Jay Sugar are the primary contract contacts. We've held three public meetings, pretty well attended. Uh. They're in the process of doing site business and developing a list of potential projects. The focus is on farm kind of projects or on the land kind of projects, not. Big infrastructure projects like the irrigation districts would do. We do have some level two studies that we've helped get them going with, but this is pretty much smaller, small projects. At this point, I talked to Carmen and Jay yesterday, about ninety-nine projects have been. Or on the, on the list.
Can you give us some example of what a project would be like?
Yeah, one of the ones over in Powell, and I can't think of the name of the operator right now, but he's got. A drain ditch running through his property and it's eroding pretty badly.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we've got some seed beach issues. So, yeah.
Okay.
Those kinds of projects.
Thank you.
We'll be coming in in January and giving you a complete rundown on how we are ending up with our Bureau of Ref Water Smart Grant. And where we're standing as far as the sediment study on the Shoshone River. That's enough information that I didn't want to try to address it here. I just wanted to let you guys know that it's coming. Uh, we'll be pretty well finish up the grant uh the end of December. And we'll be in here in January to do a report with you guys to bring you up to date on what's going on on that. We're not trying to skip it or belittle it. It's just, it's just going to take more time than. I wanted to do today. Our camera setting, we've got ten time lapse cameras. Set on various tributaries across um. That run up and down the Shoshone ahead of Wilwood Dam. And then I've got one set. On Deer Creek below Wilwood Dam and it's, gives you a pretty good measurement of sediment coming across uh, coming down out of the peaks. And what we were trying to do with the ten above, as we were trying to take a look and say, all right, we've got these spikes. With this acoustic equipment sitting there at the the Wilwood Dam. Can we correlate that to which tributaries are kicking in or all of them? What's, what's going on? If we can start saying what, what's happening and, and that was the purpose of that. Uh, we messed around quite a while. For a while, we were taking pictures every fifteen minutes, twenty-four hours a day. And it was pretty much a lot of black pictures. So we changed everything around and we were taking pictures every thirty minutes during, just during daylight hours. Um, these smart cameras were expensive. They were about nine hundred dollars a pop. I had one of them out um by the takeout on, by Corporate, by Corporate Dam, uh by Corporate Bridge, you know, the takeout where the rafters get out. It didn't last twenty-four hours before it was stolen.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, that was good for a lot of creative language skill is what that was good for. Um, so. It was well labeled, it was set on a steel post. I mean.
There's, Madam Chair, there's, there's a smart camera that you can.
Yes.
So is it traceable that way?
No, not that I know how. Not that I know.
Do you report law enforcement?
No, I just swore and put. Uh, actually, we're working with um. Torazons and trying to find a better, yeah, a similar place on private property that's controlled. And we're trying, but it, it was, we, we knew it was going to be a sketchy site, but we just didn't expect it to be that fast and that bad. And um. I was hoping that. Uh, anyway, it didn't work out. So that's what we're doing with that. We have given all the photo information. Uh, there's a NASA project with. Uh, students from the University of Wyoming that are also looking at um. Satellite data. To look for sediment issues and these kids have got all of those photos in addition to what we've done with it. So we're sharing, sharing the information and I think that we're probably going to get some good information out of this. Um, this grant finishes up this month. And um. I've got it soon as the next uh RFP comes out, the Department of Ag will ask to continue to use these pro, these cameras. They're tough, they're again, I think they're a good investment. Yeah, I, I think we're going to be fine with them. So we're going to see, on some sites, we're going to continue to use them and other sites, I want to take and move back into the peaks area so we can take a look at some of the erosion issues that we're seeing out there. So that's the point with that one. And now. For the bad news. Sorry. All of our water quality equipment this year. Is either. Well, I've been working for the district for sixteen years. It was there when I got there. So it's not like we didn't get a good run out of it and that we didn't get our money's worth. We sent our YSI son in for rebooting maintenance this spring and it was classified as non-reparable because the parts that they needed to replace are no longer being. Our global flow meter um. Failed. Our sealer is working absolutely great, but the manufacturer IDEX has notified us that our model cannot be repaired because of obsolescence. Our thermal incubator. Uh, appears to be working. Uh, everything appears normal on it, but when you compare that. We always, as part of our sample analysis, have the incubator and you look at the incubator measure tip. In addition to that, you have a standalone thermometer that you put in there to compare to make sure that what the incubator's reading is really what's happening. It's varying. When we, when we started this project, it could vary as much as ten percent, which is about three degrees. Now with the current EQ standard, standards, it can't vary more than a degree and it is varying more than a degree. We're messing with it to see if we can set it to control it and manage it. But at this point. We haven't been able to solve that. So what we're doing right now is investigating replacement costs for all this. We're looking at fifty to twenty thousand dollars to replace this stuff. So just know that water quality testing from the district is going to be sketchy. What I still, what I can still do. Depending on whether or not we get the incubator working properly is I can go out and I can grab samples and say, what does the E coli look like? But that's all, about all I can do. It doesn't. Give me, I don't have flow measurement. Which is E coli numbers are a value of how much flows going by in addition to what the number is. So I've got to pick, and the flow meter is the cheapest thing to replace here. So I, I think I, I think I found the grant to get that thing out of the way and get replaced. That's the cheapest item here. It's about twelve hundred dollars. So, but that's, that's where we're at. So just be aware that. We're working on it. We know we have issues with it. We're not alone. Um. I've been working with the lease over at now. Shoshone Conservation District in Lovel. Their equipment is in the same boat ours is, maybe a little bit worse. And uh, Cody is, their incubator is giving them grief. And so we're up, it, it's just the stage we're in. We've gone over to Matizzi and looked at equipment that Stefan's put in place. We got some good ideas and I think probably the three districts that are needing equipment are probably going to have to work on a. You get this, I'll get this and we'll get this. We'll set everything here and share it. I, I think that's about, because it, it, it doesn't make sense to me for three districts to lay out sixty thousand dollars. When we're this close and we could say, all right, we'll have a lab. And we'll work different work schedules and, and figure this out. That's kind of how I'm leaning, just because that would allow us to buy better quality. Uh, equipment than what we would buy if we were each buying it independently. And we'll go from there, but just so that you're aware that that's kind of where we're at. It's. I wish, I don't like bringing bad news in, but it's kind of.
It happens.
Yeah. And then. You guys, again, we appreciated so much the help that you gave us for the small acreage. If there's army education. Uh, think about. Working together. Helping with the district, the irrigation districts on the water master training. If we could figure out something that makes sense for them, you know, how to have a, a real meeting, how to keep the minutes. Really fundamental things is what I saw was a little sketchy. I don't think it'd be impossible to put that on, but I would cer- certainly try to figure out a way to look at it and it. And know that that could be a weak spot if we don't do it. And then um. The uh, training that I was going to try to do this year, um, again. Another blush at irrigation because we still have people coming into the area. It's not the, you know. It's not, it's kind of like painting an old barn. You don't get full coverage the first. Coat. So we'll probably be giving some more irrigation training and then I'd like to do one on um. Landscaping with the natural plants, native plants. Uh, trying to get them away from some of the stuff. There's one lady in our subdivision that's got some stuff she brought up from Arizona. I actually called Wheat and Pest and said, this stuff gets loose, we're going to have a mess. We don't need this. We go, no, we've got enough problems. And then um. Someone's going to talk a little bit about landscaping with native plants and. I've been the little crusader walking around the subdivision passing out the little books. Um. We are working, trying to find sources. For tree ceilings. Colorado Forest Service Nursery was our nursery that we worked with for fifteen years. They've shut their doors. They're in the process of. They lost their seed. Stock. You know, what the, what the stock that they would use for uh, making their little small transplants off. They lost that last year. And they're having a hard time finding appropriate seed. With all, all the stuff with staff upside down and backwards for a couple of years, it really wrecked their operation. So we're working with them, we're working with Josh Stoltz, who used to be one of the managers down there and he's starting a new nursery up in, in Loveland, Colorado. He'll have six species this year. So we're going to see what we can do with that, but tree sales are also a little bit dicey. Uh. We're trying to investigate the nursery, the, the state nursery in Nebraska and we're looking at Lincoln Oaks again in North Dakota. Lincoln Oaks was a little shaky last year and that they had so much more business because of Wyoming situation. Than what they anticipated, that they weren't ready for that big push. So we'll see what we can do with that. So those are the kind of scary parts. Got a lot of good things happening, but we've got some, I think we have some opportunities as well.
What are we doing or discussing as far as water conservation when you're talking about landscaping and, and, well, irrigating, understand that part, but there's also things people can do to. Help conserve water um, in doing some of these things? Is that part of the program?
Irrigation districts are pretty much requiring that people go to sprinkler systems.
Right.
And that does a couple of things. It uh. Eliminates tailwater. But it also eliminates people from turning that water on and leaving it run for multiple days. That's the, that's probably what it does the most good for. Um.
What about in your landscaping stuff? Do you have those?
Again, the native plant thing, it'd be the major thing that we're talking there. These is the plants that are.
Can handle it.
Can handle our, can handle our climate. And we're trying to convince them that there's a little bit different being out here with six inches of natural precept by altitude. Than it would be like in the Midwest or Eastern West Coast. And so they have some, they're, they're learning. What I'm seeing with most of our new people is they're very interested. And so they have some, they're, they're learning. What I'm seeing with most of our new people is they're very interested. Uh, we're still, we'll probably be always having to cope with the folks to come out and buy the two acres and maybe we slap five horses on it. Oh, yeah. Um, I've been working with the breweries here to see if I can get one of their brewmasters to go out there and talk about hops. Because they're tough. And they're pretty. And they, and you know, they're useful. So, and, but. Maybe I, maybe I spend a little, work too much time drinking the beers.
Research is important.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta do what you gotta do. But uh, but that's one of the things that we are working at is trying to find place niche crops. That are useful for these small acreages that uh, are not impossible to do. The lab, the big workshop that we did, one of the best things about it is that Trent Reed had gotten with the. Um, equipment dealers. And they had brought in a lot of their smaller pieces of equipment that will work well for, and there's actually a few people that are buying that equipment and, and doing some of that work. So if you need someone to. Plow a five acre or two acre to, it's, it's doable now, where a couple of years ago that wasn't. So we're, we're gaining.
The only other thing that crosses my mind, I guess, as far as. Education with the people is uh, conversations at fair. Have you thought about doing? More informational stuff during fair, like in the Heart Mountain Building to have. Informational things there to help some of these people that may not attend, but.
Well, for, for us. I probably haven't. They pay me to work three days a week. I'm usually working four.
Oh, at least.
Yeah, and um. I just haven't taken. You know, with, with the evening meetings and all the other stuff, I just don't, and every one of our board. Those families, most of them are farm families and they're going nine hundred miles an hour, especially during fair. So I haven't. I know that Cody is interested in doing some of that and where we can, we are partnering with Cody wherever we can. And we're working on the education programs together with them. Uh, I'm trying to bring Elise from Lovel to get turned into that. Our small acreage partners are the Wheat and Pest. The Cody Conservation District, uh, we're gonna get the. Game and Fish guys going again because we're, we're seeing quite a bit of bear activity over there on Heart Mountain. I think it's a good idea for people to understand. What they plant might matter. And how to, how to be aware of things. We've seen over in Matizzi, some of the, we've got pictures over there on Hog's branch. Of grizzly bears out there messing around in the hayrows. So um. You know, just, you know, we, 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 we're in their territory, so we need to have, we need game and fish educating a little bit with that. So we'll try to get them going again. I'd like to get the master gardeners re-engaged and talk about tree pruning and that sort of thing, kind of go back to some of our early concepts, conservation. Workshops that we had ten years ago. So those are some of the things I, I can see where I'd be improving.
And do you still go to the Arbor Day? Giveaways, tree giveaways they have like in Powell, I know they used to when, back in.
No.
Commons.
Uh, no, the um. Since we've lost our ability to sell trees and that sort of thing, they've kind of taken us out of that loop. I used to be on the tree board in Powell. And um, I'm, I'm, haven't been now. And then when George Johnson was alive, she was my contact for a lot of that stuff. And when we lost her, that was a big setback. So no, I, I, that's a hole that's developed that we haven't built.
Madam Chair, I just wanted, for the other commissioners, the one workshop that I did attend for the Educate Small Acreage, it was, I can attest to, and it was a huge success. Most of the information I felt was somewhat elementary, but it was the, the people there were so engaged and involved. Uh, I thought it was very, very successful and, and especially with all the people coming in. And I can see where she's saying, you know. Even though we had an influx of subdivision, people developing things like that, we, there's a constant turnover and people that truly don't understand. How things operate and work well.
Oh yeah, to us, that was interesting you said that because you, you know, one of the things, one of my friends that I work with is also a new, a newbie from Michigan. And she went to the thing and she goes, Anne, she said, that is way too technical. She said, what is wastewater?
Yeah. Just the fact of irrigation alone, they don't understand at all.
Yeah.
Waste water, exactly.
Yeah, so Sarah.
Little things that we take for granted here are, um, are very helpful to some of these and it was a huge. People, amount of people there. And I mean, if we can put a land use plan involved in that, we could get more, more people.
You gotta do it, speed them that elegant.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Anyway, no, I thought it was very good. And I wasn't able to attend the whole day, but I was most of the day there.
Okay, well, again, if you can find some funds, we appreciate it. If you can't, forget it. And we'll go, we'll do the best we can.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, um, today's agenda because of those two hearings.
Oh, I think I've had, mine's been work. I've had, I think, was that an hour or something between?
So we're off till eleven, basically.
Yeah, well, I'm taking now.
You take now right there if you want to.
Off till eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I got a few things to.
Okay. Yeah, those hearings were supposed to be.
Yes, we're close enough time wise, we can go ahead with our 11 o'clock agenda item being the Cody shooting complex and requesting permission to file for an amendment to their special use permit. So, Mr. Smith, if you'd like to go ahead and tell us what's happening?
Okay. Checked with the board and we've gone over this. And we have our number one would be extend the burns another 10 feet on our pistol range.
Extending meaning up or out? Up, okay.
Number two would be our archery range in parking lot. Number three would be a bunker trap we're thinking about putting in. And number four would be finished paving the road from where's the gate is all the way up to the right place. And then we got number. Number five. Seems like everybody wants a thousand yard range. And number six would be a burn. 10 feet tall, 100 feet long. That's it.
Does that burn go along with the thousand foot range or is that something different?
Oh, that's different. That's totally. Did you get the copy of these?
Give them up.
Okay, I thought you did.
No, we haven't seen anything.
She got, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That was a misunderstanding. Okay.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you had it.
That's it.
Or is there archery? Soon as you come to the gate. On the left.
There.
Yes, sir.
So as far as I understand, then Otis, there you you're showing nothing as far as development on the south part of the expansion. That's right.
The archery ways would be a little bit.
Right on the border, right there, number two.
Right? It would split up lines.
But where the so when where the newest berm that we the newest berm that you put up?
Yes.
That would be in that area, that vicinity?
It would be back the arch, the targets would be right up against that well. The burn would be the back.
Of the new of archery. Okay. Nothing else further south. At this time.
No.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and chair. I'm confused about the archery range. I see that it identifies a parking lot, but where's the actual range?
I'm sorry, that's that's Smith's leading. The archery range is right there up against the burn. And then the parking lot would be as you turn off.
Only only got half.
Well.
Was going to be a two hundred yards rifle.
The new land.
The new lane is here. And so the first. That's existing or just extending.
That's my mistake.
So Otis, in your reference to the berm and that particular new area in between those where some of the shooting stuff was happening, you're not going to do shooting there? That's being turned into archery?
Yeah, well, the burn areas, yeah, okay, and we're just at this time, we're not going to do anything to that.
No shooting in that particular area.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Excuse me, could you could you define bunker trap for me?
Define bunker?
Bunker trap is a they build it up about three and a half feet off the ground and it's the whole is probably what fifty fifty sixty feet long?
Yeah.
And underneath is six, seven, eight different tracks underneath that you can't see. And when you get you walk, it's just like shooting five stands, shall we say, you go from one station to five.
Okay.
And they come out underneath you and they go this whatever and they're a little bit smaller and a whole lot faster.
Okay.
So it's a big thing. People enjoy it, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before I'd be willing to move forward on anything here, I this is the detail I I would really like to see more detail on what's what's being proposed. I mean, this you know, some scratches on a on a footage and a I guess that was map layers from a phone or a computer. I I would prefer to see a lot more detail.
By that, you mean design? Art free range laid out like a graph?
Madam Chair. Just anything that I've got. I've got some magic marker numbers and scratched on a on a piece of paper here and there's there's no design. I don't see a design of what you're doing. You know, and we're talking about maybe this bunker over this berm over here. Well, do you know where that firm is? It doesn't do anything for me.
So you're wanting the design of bunker trap and you're wanting a design of an archer range and you want a design of every of all these things?
I would think, Madam Chair, Ms. Smith, I would like to see more detail, yes. I'm just one of five.
Joy. I I just wonder if they also identify the directionality of the shooting in all of these cases as part of that. So you understand which direction they're going to be gaining.
North, south, east, west.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I guess I have a procedural question. This is a question about allowing the shooting complex to move forward with updating their S U P, which would still come back to us for approval. Is that design format in a situation where they would be doing that in between these two meetings or is that something you want to have before you even tell them we will consider moving forward with the S U P?
Well, Madam Chair, I would think they come back with the S U P application. I mean, a full design would be required through the S U P.
That's what I'm asking if that's where we're headed. Process wise.
And I mean, at this stage of the game, I don't have a problem with allowing them to move forward with the S U P application. And before it's ever approved, we'll be able to see a full design of all the stuff they have down. You know.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I I don't know how this works either, and I guess I'd ask Joy first, is the current S U P currently as a matter of fact, do not include the additional property. So I would think that that would also need to be included in the S U P as well as these design characteristics and.
Well, the thousand yard rifle range is on the new property.
Right.
Along with the burn.
What I'm saying is it isn't included in the current paperwork. Right?
Yes, so Madam Chair, this S U P is going to have to include everything.
Yes.
Because of the size of the impact. So this S U P will replace their current S U P.
Right.
So they're gonna have that everything.
Right, but it'll be both legal descriptions as far as the old and the new. Okay. Cause that's not listed on here as as something that needs to be included in the new S U P. And so what I'm saying is it does have to be. The the both legal descriptions need to be added. Okay.
They're going to have to show specifically on the lands where the impacts to be for the whole thing.
Okay. Thanks.
Madam Chair, with the new amended S U P is going to have to also um, recognize the public access to the ridge on the back lip. So in the wording, along with the legal description, which we've all we already were over that part, but we know that's a done deal, right? We've moved the fence and to allow that to happen, but that just that needs to be addressed within the amended S U P so that it's everybody knows that that is part of it as well. Even though your S U your your activities here are one thing. But any other restriction, um, easements, things like that need to be included in the in moving forward. I'm assuming you're going to be helping him with this S U P.
Yeah, the thing is, I don't know what those things are. Like if there's something like that.
That's why I'm stating
Yeah.
that there is an easement through the southwest corner, is that be correct? For a public ease public access through the corner of the expansion property that needs to be addressed in the 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 new S U P. Now, if I could, the question I have on number five, the the new thousand yard shoot, how will you access that? Um, you're going to build that roll a new access off the county road and?
That's that's going to be uh, used the gate that's already there at the corner because this is going to be a limited access. This is not going to be shall we say, every person can just go out there and shoot at a thousand yards. This is going to be something that long range precision. Um, I mean, the general, the membership would be able to use it. But it's going to be strictly shall we say, as it is right now with our long range precision. The targets that they use at the present time and the distance that they're shooting at the present time. We're going to be shooting on the same mountain at probably the same type targets.
I guess my word go with that Otis is you have a very good safety regulated area currently.
Yeah.
And that may be something to address in your S U P is how are you going to address the the safety issue as far as general public having access to this new thousand yard shoot?
We're gonna have.
Having to go through the main entrance.
No, they're we're having a berm there that's a hundred feet long and ten feet tall. Um, the impact area is exactly the same impact area as it is right now.
I understand that, but to access the current long range, you gotta have a card. You have to have membership. You need to be with somebody.
Sure.
This new spot will not require that.
That gate will be locked until these special events.
Okay. And I want to just note that somewhere in.
No, it's gonna be locked. Joe Blow, it just comes out there, not going to be able to get in there. It will be locked. It's only for special events.
And I just say that needs to be as part of the 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 mandatory S U P that we it needs to be part of. Could you just address those little things?
Well, okay, but I mean, I wasn't when I was informed of doing this, it just says, show us where you want these things. That's what we did. It didn't say that we had to. You know.
Madam Chair, if I may continue. The our main concern here is it is is county property. And that's public health and safety, right? And that's the main issue and we're not gonna, we don't need and and so moving forward into this new current S U P. That's our main concern is safety, okay? I think we need to somehow in our and then that S U P will then be give us a chance to rewrite a lease agreement with you. Okay, okay, that lease agreement is going to get a lot more detailed in safety issues. And I'm going to go for instance here, and that is that when you lease the property out and you have people that are leasing it and you're saying you don't have control and they're putting targets up there on the hill on skylines and shit like that. That ain't gonna happen.
No.
It did happen though.
We're going to use the exact same targets that are up there at the present.
Well, how are you going to control or you're never going to lease out the place again?
Not this range, not that thousand yard range, no.
You're talking about the whole facility, though, not just the thousand yard range.
No.
How do we? How do you propose in your S U P to control the safety issues upon leasing out to venues, other venues to for the property?
Would you state your name, please?
Hey, Ms. Peter.
Okay, if you'd stand up so we can hear you, sorry.
What we would do in the future is if we did lease property out again to another entity, we would go through with our range officers as they're setting up their targets to make sure they fall within the purview of safety for the county. And demand that they not change them after we leave. This is, I mean, if we're not onsite, they have range officers of their own that will be watching over and making sure everybody's safe. But when we're not there, they have to maintain those parameters that we set and the county set for safety. So that they're not buried and it's always the same program.
Madam Chair, all I'm asking is that that kind of wording needs to be placed in this S U P. That's all I meant.
Exactly, that's that's.
Okay.
Joy.
Madam Chair, it sounds to me like there's a little bit of a divergence here between the lease terms and the S U P terms.
Right.
Um, and I would caution you, you may want to seek legal review to ensure which thing is supposed to have which terms in it.
Right.
Uh, the S U P certainly can address safety and if they're supposed to be requiring to have a certain thing done, but that should necessarily match your lease.
Okay.
Period. So that would be my concern is to ensure that they're in harmony and that one is not trying to achieve the goal of the other.
I didn't want to stay for the record. I have I I personally have reservations interning to any agreement with the Cody shooting complex under the current leadership. We've had a pattern of not acting, I feel, not making any good faith with commissioners and with the public. And I think those are some issues that need to be addressed before we move forward with the S U P or lease.
Mr.?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
If I could, I would almost like to open that up myself. I didn't respond to you Otis earlier on the request for a text because number one, I don't think you'd have liked what I wanted to hear and I'd rather say it right here in front of everybody. And that is we came lead Commissioner Livingston and I came out to the board meeting about a month ago in September and we talked about safety issues and the expansion and it was made point clear to everybody there that there was to be no more activity and expansion, development, anything until we got this all solved.
It's true.
And within a goddamn week. You build a damn parking lot on part of it.
I build a what?
Parking lot. Number two, right there is partially in the expansion.
It is at a level. We didn't build a park. That's not a park.
You cleared a bunch of stages, but you still had activity development when you were specifically told not to. Now, is it a big issue? No, but why? Why would you do that when a week before you were said cease and desist all activity and expansion until we get this settled and a new S U P done? I want to know.
Well, the best of my knowledge. We plan on putting an archery range there.
That's fine. In the future.
And we wanted to level that off, but we don't want it. We we as as far as we were doing is leveling it off in the.
What was the agreement we talked about the night at their meeting? What did what was the agreement that we harped on mainly cease and desist all any activity over there? Development or shooting or anything until we get this new lease agreement. That was pretty dang clear.
On the new, oh, oh, okay, we were under the impression that was the new property that we have.
It was.
Okay, this was on the old.
No, it is not, just like your fence. You don't know where your boundary is.
It's where the the fence with the archer range where it is rightness where it will be right now. There was a fence through that. On the left hand side was a rifle range, right hand side was on the whole property.
And the the clearing existed into the new expansion.
No, we never, we never went.
I have a map right here.
Never went past that burn. We never went past that burn. We never went past that burn.
The burn isn't the property line.
You're talking two different things. When the county offered to come in and build those burns on that south range. That's when they had them level that area. So the county scraped it off. And like I say, as far as I know, we hadn't moved into all this S U P and don't do anything else.
Not at that point.
Not at that point, when that was scraped off and the burns were built. So that's not a violation.
This particular scraping was only two to three weeks ago and it was definitely after we started these conversations because our road and bridge guys reported doing it. They were asked by Otis as they were going by to scrape and level this one new area. That's the area we're referring to and that was only within the last month after the conversations about don't do anything till we get this all sorted out.
So it was after the burns were.
Way up.
This we're talking history weeks. Well, I can tell you when we did it.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, it was it was after Commissioner Teal and I met with you.
September twentieth.
Well, they must have been. Obviously, it was a misunderstanding. We already started that.
And Madam Chair, that's what I'm alluding to is that everything's a misunderstanding. Misunderstanding about the fence, misunderstanding that we you you agreed to leave public access. It's always a misunderstanding. I'm just stating that I I have reservations with moving forward.
Well, the whole board that was there are sitting in this room.
Of course.
And they agreed that it wasn't exactly the way you say it was.
Well.
I'm sorry.
That's that's you. I know what I heard. Commissioner Teal knows what he heard.
If I could. The rest of the board is here. Was it the understanding to do no do no longer no more development or activity in the expansion or not? When Commissioner Livingston and I showed up to your meeting? Was that not the gist of the discussion? Yes, sir.
My knowledge from that meeting, we did do work there. There was no more work done after that meeting.
Yes, there was.
I know.
Then here, as soon as you go through your gate on the left hand side, right there, all that clearing was done after that meeting.
Yes.
The week after that meeting. I have a we have GPSs in our grader and it shows exactly where that grader traveled and when.
I don't honestly, but I do not recall.
I understand. Well, my point is our request was completely ignored in my opinion. And I starting to follow Commissioner Livingston on this as far as reservations. It makes it very difficult as commissioner liaison to defend the actions when we specifically meet with you and ask you to do one thing and let's get this done. And I I I'm gonna I'm the first to tell you that I think it's bureaucracy of getting this S U P is frustrating. However, rules are rules and we're doing it for the for a reason. But to me, I I feel like I was blatantly slapped in the face when we met with you guys to try to work this out and bring this amend this F U P to include the expansion area and the very next week you go ahead and ignore everything we said.
But that wasn't in the expansion area.
Yes, it is.
Otis, that is the exact point I'm making. It was, it is, it's mapped. I can prove it to you and you don't even know where your boundary is and you're blaming your fence being off way back on someone else as well. It's not someone else's fault. This is your fault. You don't know where your boundary is, then don't be doing development. It's not someone else's fault, this is your fault. You don't know where your boundary is, then don't be doing development. Okay.
Joy.
Madam Chair, so in discussion with Otis and his team and you, I've made it clear that I think there should be much more clear terms as to any future. Improvements or developments to this property because it is coming home. And so I did explain this to the applicant that I think that they should be having a discussion with you about anything moving forward, any improvements, because those become your responsibility. Should this lease fail or go away? Now you're inheriting new improvements that you may have to have expense for, so. If that's not clear now in the lease agreements or whatever, I would recommend that that be made clear to all parties, that moving forward, it needs a majority of the board to agree. To any improvements that are made on that property.
Well, I wanna be clear that. There is no negative against the shooting complex, the process. The, the benefit to Park County, um, everybody's in favor of having the shooting complex. We just need it under the correct rules and understanding because we own it and we're responsible to some extent for it. We want the lease to work out for you guys so that it works out for the, the betterment of the public and, and the people that come in to use it. There's no negative there, we just need to get it. Where we are cooperating on how it works and it's safe. And those are the issues that we're getting, and those are the complaints that we're getting from some of the public is the safety features. Um, and so we need to work on that, and we need to be sure those are clear. So I think as, as if we move forward, um, as we do that, that's our main goal. Is public health, safety and welfare, that's what we're here for.
I think this S U P thing is, um. It's very new to us. Of all the years we've gone out there, we've never had anything to do with S U P or anything else.
You have an existing S U P.
Like?
Yeah.
Never.
You have an existing S U P to use that property for what you use it for. You might not have been here when they did it, but you have an existing S U P. That's why it came up that you needed to update the S U P. To include the new property and any expansion things you wanted to do, because your original S U P has certain things that are allowed out there, and you've done several things since then that haven't been added to it. Have we said anything? No, but this is a good time to do that with the addition of more property. And more types of shooting, which I don't even understand what some of the shooting is, I'm not going there, but. But we need to have everything complete and we need to include the new property. And then we had the fence issue.
I believe that S U P was created here by the county. I'm not sure that we were part of it, except the sign on the dotted line.
Might be.
I mean. Otis and I, between us. Have probably been out there sixty years.
Mm hmm.
And I realize there's a lot more bureaucratic red tape when you involve government. And so we have to be kind of educated as we go along if we're going to comply. With what you guys need for your records and, you know, your bookkeeping, so.
It sure might have been, Mike, I have no idea how it was done twenty, thirty years ago, whenever it was done, but it, it exists. Yeah, so.
So that S U P we're talking about was just developed. We literally just did that in the span of my time here. And the reason that S U P was brought forward was because there was an expansion to. At archery range or not the archery range, the complex at that time. And so when we got wind of it, we, uh, we approached them, they had meetings with us, they came for you. For that S U P, so I think most of you were on the board at that time. So that is when the S U P was developed, and we said at that time. That just because they had gone on for so many years without getting permits and doing the things that were supposed to be done, that didn't mean it was okay. Which is why we were putting the S U P in place, and at that time, we were covering everything that they did at the complex, plus the public events. The very large events they were performing to do at the time, and that's when the S U P was born.
Okay.
There were permits for some buildings and things on the property prior to that, there was a lot of expansion going on that I'm not even sure the board was aware of, and so that was one of the reasons. Why we brought it forward, was because it needed to be under your purview, it needed to be, the public needed to be aware of what was going on.
So about three and a half, four years ago.
It wasn't.
Yeah, or twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, I believe.
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification, the public hearing for that S U P was June sixteen, twenty twenty.
Okay. So you were here.
Madam Chair, I always want to state, I'm, I have. I'm, I'm along the same lines, I have no problem. With the shooting complex, I want it there, I think it needs to be there. It's a great benefit to the public, it's a great benefit to this community. My reservations with current leadership, I'm not the only one. I've got resignation letters to board members that have concerns with the current leadership. I wanna see the complex move forward, I wanna, I want us to work together as partners. And that has not been demonstrated to me.
Okay. If I can address that. I got the same letter. And, uh. In fact, I think it was two letters, if I'm not mistaken. Without a six hundred family members, if you've gotten two complaints, that's a pretty good average. So. But, you know, I kinda thought you might bring this up. So. On both of those letters. I guess the best way to be describe those two gentlemen. Is a loose cannon. And to prove my point. Wes over here from Best of the West. And he would like to express to you. The problems we had with the gentleman you're speaking of. Wes?
Uh, wait, bro, um, now, the gentleman you're speaking of, uh, we've rented the facility quite a few times for different shooting events and, and, uh, classes we've done out there. Uh, and on two separate occasions, you know, I've been approached as to reserve the range, and we have it till five o'clock and. Um, that, no, I'm not there, uh, I'm not supposed to be there, and, um, I've got an event the next day, is what the individual said. We have the event the next day, so you can't be here to shoot because we have to set up targets. Um, it was clear, we paid the fee, we paid all the dues, uh, became pretty belligerent, hey, I'm on the board, uh, I know what's going on, you don't. Uh, is what he told me, um, at that point is when I called, uh, Otis as well as Jim Kent, who was also on the board, who works for the best of us with us. Um, and eventually he, he didn't leave. Um, after, you know, I, I did say, well, just so you know, our company did just donate ten thousand dollars to your event that you were putting on next week. For a long-range shooting that he was doing, uh, for Heart Mountain Classics, so it was at that point that he kind of stepped down, but. Uh, yeah, he came out of nowhere and tried to kick me off the range, uh, on two separate occasions, um, when we clearly had it on the calendar and everything else was heard, so. Uh, you know, that's kinda why I was here to, to mention that.
When you have someone, we let them breathe by the calendar. And all of, all of our entities know that if they want to schedule something, they go to the calendar, see if that date is clear. If that date is clear, they contact us and tell us. What the, what the event is, how many days it's gonna be. One, two, a week, whatever. If the calendar is clear. We will schedule that. This particular individual. Comes unglued, screams, hollers, threatens, um. Just absolutely go crazy. They call me because they're scared of this guy, I get on the phone with him, tell him I'm on my way, I'll be right there. He never stays, he leaves. I have to smooth it over with all these people that are out of state taking their classes. This has happened on more than one occasion, he just goes crazy. The other one, he was our treasurer. He screwed us up so bad that I was getting phone calls from creditors telling us that we did not pay our bills. And I'm calling him and saying, what's going on here? Finally had to get ahold of Mike, who was the ex-treasurer. And Dean Blackwell, which was our current treasurer. And both of them have worked diligently. And I don't think they still have got our books straight. How bad he screwed it up. And he got mad because we had asked him that he's no longer on the board, he gave us a resignation letter. But when they start getting phone calls from creditors telling us we have not paid our bill. And I thought, you gotta be joking. I get ahold of Mike, I get ahold of Dean, they're sitting there wondering what he did, how he did it. And they still haven't got it squared away. So he was upset that we hadn't let him go as our treasurer. We wrote this letter. This part of his conversation with. First one, I may have had two conversations. In six years, whether. And they were more or less high and divided. Other than that, he has never brought anything up in a meeting, he has never voiced his opinion, neither one of them have. So when I read your letter that you wrote, I thought it was quite comical. That neither one has ever addressed anything. And the way this works, I don't make a decision. The board makes the decision. They bring their case to the board, the board listens to it. I, I bring it to a vote. I ask for a discussion, everybody discusses it, and when they're all them. I ask for a vote, whatever that vote is. I have to apply it. That's the way it's run. I do not have that power. The board has the power.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If, if I could. You know, first of all, like I say, I do agree with Commissioner Livingston and also Commissioner Teal. We've had a lot of problems with the shooting complex, and there's been miscommunication and mistakes made on both sides. And this is my twelfth year as a county commissioner, and I will be the first to admit that when it comes to the shooting complex. We've been relatively lax out there, I don't think the commissioner really understood their potential liability out there. Now, we do understand our. The extent of the liability we have out there, we do own the land. And we have all these different issues. And there has been mistakes made on both sides, I'll be the first to admit that, but I think our. Our charge right now is to move the process forward as best we can. And all of the things that we're concerned about that we've expressed here today. Need to be covered in the S U P and the new lease agreement. Then with moving forward, we make sure that everything's down in black and white, everybody's on the same page, I mean, here we are with a. The board not even knowing that they had an S U P. It was just finalized two years ago. You know? And so anyway, in an effort to move this process forward, we've all had an opportunity to express our concerns here. I would go ahead and make the motion that, uh, we give them permission to file for an S U P. Is it with, would this be an amendment or a new S U P?
Well, it, it's an amendment that qualifies as a new S U P.
Okay.
Size. So it'll be a new S U P.
Because, you know, I mean, there, there's no one up here that doesn't wanna see the shooting complex prosper and continue to function. We just have to make sure that it functions. The best it can.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll second his motion to approve, um, there's a lot of. Still working parts that are coming up, if you could get with Joy. Get a copy of the S U P that you have. And discuss it with your board members. And come up with the new additions that you would like to be a part of that, also get a copy of the plat or whatever. Instead of an aerial photograph, I'd like to see the diagram of the entire shooting complex with a highlighted. New. Items that you would like to put on there, have that highlighted. Plus, I'd like to see a draft of the lease agreement ahead of time. Before we approve it, um, that also Kim and, and, and Joy could help you with. To put that lease agreement together.
No. Madam Chair.
Um, okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion.
Discussion. Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mangle, I believe they're two totally separate issues. Um, the S U P or amended S U P is one item, uh, the lease agreement will come.
After the.
After, or at least as separate. A separate issue.
But at the same time, when these people are discussing. The new improvements to also discuss. The lease agreement.
I have no problem with the discussion, but if there will have, no part of the lease agreement will, will not be part of the S U P.
I don't believe that the lease is part of the S U P.
It should be part of the lease.
The S U P is part of the lease.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, how we incorporate the discussion that we've had here with how. Things get controlled for subleasing or whatever that's considered, I'm not even sure, we're not with the attorneys on this yet, but. We all know there's concerns on some of that subleasing and, and protections and how it's monitored. So those things can be in the lease, um, and I assume they can be in the S U P also, but we need to figure out how that's gonna get worded and how it's gonna work. So, yeah, they'll be kind of working at the same time, but not.
Together.
Together.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, yeah, uh, two, two points of discussion. The first one's not really on the motion, but when you said that, you know, we said that the work was done. By the county out there, leveled the parking area or where you're gonna have the archery range, and you said, no, it wasn't. I'm here to tell you, it was. We have GPS tracking equipment and all of our graders, and they have the exact date. And what they graded. And so we know it was, so that's. That argument's not here or there. And the only other point of discussion is we're all concerned with Commissioner Livingston was. Was the design of the different projects, and I guess I'll leave that up to our staff to make sure. That they request proper documentation on the design of the project.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I just received this document five minutes before the meeting, I didn't even have a chance, but I would like to say they did submit a draft special use permit application, and I cannot accept it. Because it's not accurate to what they're proposing, but I'm gonna have to work with them, I think we're gonna have the need to, to work through that specifically. And that will be my request that they do that. My staff before submitting the, the application, which you will ultimately need to sign.
Okay. Yes, sir, and if you'd state your name, please?
Yes, Brent Martin. Uh, now to kind of go back to the beginning here. I'm gonna get corrected on some points, but. The map. The, the map that was submitted, uh. These are kind of wish list items now, other than archery range. Which we have already spent the money to acquire the targets. And there's not much, uh, expense to carry that forward. The other items are things that are proposals for future. Development that we have no funding for. There's no money to spend on them, it's kind of a wish list. We have applied for a grant through, through the. Park County.
Recreation.
Park County Outdoor Recreation Collaborative, okay, through them, we've applied for a grant. And if we get the money. Then these things are gonna go forward, so we haven't really done any design work or anything on them, all we've talked about is where we're gonna put them.
Okay.
So the information you have right now is basically all we have at this point. And we probably aren't gonna go forward with any design stuff until we're. Barely confident that we're gonna get the money, because then we're gonna have to pay for surveys and, and other work that we don't really have the money to pay for at this point. So I don't know if that money is the issue, but, uh, but that's really where we're at.
Okay.
See, we were told this was a wish list. And if you have any future things that you would like to add to the range, please bring it up with this meeting. That's basically what we did, there's no design or anything of that nature.
But I think you can provide us with an accurate. Described legal map. Of the properties. That shows these things in what you believe to be, if it's a thousand-foot range, then kind of block out that thousand-foot area. Um, if you think you have an idea how high the burn should be, or you think they'll be, give us as much information as you can give us, because information has never hurt anybody. We just need to have as much as you can get, if there's a formal design that has to happen after that, we understand that, because this is not the perfect, and we understand the funding scenario, we deal with the same things, but. We just need as much information as we can get, but what we really want is knowing where it's gonna be on the range, in the properties. And how much space and what's headed at what, as, as Joy mentioned. What's shooting what direction and that type of thing, because our job is the health, safety and welfare. So as much as you can provide us, I understand no engineering or cost design at this point, but as much info as you can give us, is that sufficient for? The board right now?
Well, yeah, Madam Chair, my only question is. I mean, does this make the S U P amendment application premature? They don't have the money, they're not sure they're gonna do it under the terms of a normal S U P. By the time it's granted, you have a year to complete the work.
Joy.
And Madam Chair, one of the reasons why we asked them before you with what they want, not just what they're doing right now, is because. They, you need to know what's coming, and if it is to be covered under this S U P, then it should be, otherwise they're gonna have to come back each time. They have a new thing, and they're gonna have to get their S U P amended. Now, with my understanding, this grant funding was coming for paving for sure, I didn't even know there was gonna be an arable range, so that's new, so I thought that was going away. So, I mean, for me right now, I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and we just need an opportunity to sit down and get the, the record straight.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, I, in answer to Commissioner Teal, I believe that those can be addressed on a condition.
Case, case, case.
Yeah, we can approve the S U P and that condition would be that this is, you know, item six is, uh, uh.
We can defer until later.
Defer until, yeah, funding is available or whatever.
All right.
I have a motion on the floor to.
I am gonna, I will vote in favor of the motion because I wanna see this move forward, but I'm still dealing with reservations with the current leadership.
I have a motion to. Allow, moving forward on the. Uh, amended. Formation of a new S U P with the Cody shooting complex.
Application for the.
Application. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion passes. So our situation is this, you will work with the planning office. For whatever they deem is required through the regulations on S U Ps to move this forward. And we will continue to work on the lease issue with legal counsel for the county to make sure that where where we need to be. Um, any further, yes?
Madam Chair, to make sure that we're doing things as proper as 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 an eyes are dog and peas are cross, I'd like to make a motion. To right now to uh draft a letter of notification for ninety day. Um. Notice of lease. To be redone. In our current contract, it says that the lease needs to be. Does it not? Am I wrong?
It does.
And to make sure that we're doing everything in order and by the by. The rules, as much as I hate bureaucracy. Let's start that ball right now.
Hey, if I understand your motion, you're making a motion to.
To rewrite.
To rewrite the lease within the next to have a ninety day limit.
This is their ninety day notes.
Okay, but we do the lease.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Because according to our. Like Madam Chair. Um, yes.
Oh, good.
I die for last second.
I need a second before we talk about it anymore.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Yes.
A cur our under the current lease, we are required to give ninety days to rewrite the lease.
Good.
The lease needs to be rewritten regardless. Of the expansion or the new S U P. It's 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 original, it's outdated, it doesn't address everything. And all I'm doing is doing this is getting in our current lease, it says we must give them ninety days that we're going to come up with a new lease.
Okay.
That's all I'm trying to do here is make sure that we're following the old rules.
Okay.
Okay, I got no problem with that.
Okay, so I have a motion that the county is notifying this Cody shooting complex, giving them the ninety day notice that we are preparing an updated lease.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so you're on notice that we are updating the lease and we'll have it within ninety days.
Hmm, I want to.
I'd like to note that that uh it's for Mr. Livingston that. No one man. Makes the decision to go to shooting complex. It goes for a board, like for an up and down.
Some people like it, some people don't like it. I've been in position leadership. I understand that well.
Okay.
Um, with nothing else, we do have a public hearing in two minutes that we're required to do. So.
Go.
Yes. Appreciate it. Thank you all for coming.
Question. What the hell are these microphones for? I couldn't hear a word you guys just saying. Sorry, you should have hollered. I could.
They weren't picking up back there?
It's supposed to be. Well, we need to talk. We need to practice more, talking more into them.
You know, I can't. Oh my. You're substantial. I can breathe a little higher. Because you know, that was.
Snuck in.
Hey.
It really didn't hurt anything. What you did, it really isn't that big of a deal. It's not like it built it. It's just.
Hey, we have a public hearing just. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, with that, the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing for L and P Minor Subdivision Number Sixty Nine Sketch Plan, and we have Kim Dillon and Jane.
Excuse me, that was Lee and Lloyd. They heated everything.
We're not going there. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this project is Larry Nelson. This property is in the R R two zoning district. The planning area is Cody local. We did receive a minor subdivision application on August thirteenth of this year, including payment sketch plan, copy of notice and subdivide. We did receive a revised sketch plan on September fourteenth. You see that in figure one. The requested action is approval of a two lot subdivision. One lot would be twelve point one acres. One lot will be twenty two point nine acres. Both will be for residential use. Ownership is Mr. Nelson. The history is there was a final plan for Stewart Simple Subdivision. It was approved in oh five. That subdivision is to the east of this property. However, it's in the same. Tract of record, which means this subdivision needs to come, needs to go forward as a minor. Is it was our conclusion because of this already um Stewart Simple Subdivision, which which I think maybe was a two lot. Two lot, yeah. So anyhow, our conclusion is this needed to go forward as a minor subdivision. Therefore, we classify it as a minor. This property, as I mentioned, is in the R R two zoning district. These lot sizes, as proposed, are consistent with that zoning district. And again, you see in figure one, a copy of the revised sketch plan, current sketch plan. The location of the property, it's shown in figure two. It's approximately a mile north of Cody. County Road two A B is is on the west side of the property. And County Road two C D is just a little bit to the north. Actually, it borders part of this property on the north. On the northeast corner. And I will mention, because we'll talk about the 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 roads in a minute. Property or proposal lot one does have an address off of Road two C D. Side characteristics currently this property is used for residential and ag uses. You can see in figure two. The residence is on the north side. Ag is tends to be on the south. There is an existing residence and septic system on proposed lot one. Figure three, we show a topo map. There is some moderate slope. That in a way is, I believe, is is mostly through proposed lot one. And then there's a there's a change in elevation going to north and going to the south. And in terms of neighboring land use, we have that shown in figure four. Really, the neighboring land uses are a combination of ag, uh residential vacant residential and exempt lands. And there is a set of roaming parcel that borders the northwest corner of the property, and you see that in figure four. Municipal review, this property is within a mile of the city of Cody. Just the the southern portion of the property is within a mile, and I apologize, we have on that paragraph, and I'm on the bottom of page six. We said, because it is within a mile of a municipality, municipal review is not required, that should say it is required. And we did notify the city of Cody. However, we've not heard anything back from them. Notice of intent to subdivide, that was in the Cody Enterprise on August ninth and August sixteen, consistent with our regs. Notice of public hearing was also in the enterprise for this meeting. That occurred on October fourth and October eleventh. And on September twenty eighth of this year, we mailed out that certified notice to property owners within six hundred and sixty feet. Terms of agency referrals, we have a list that we have to notify, given it's a subdivision. We also notify other agencies we think might have an interest. Keel Sanitation said they could provide service. We received two comments back from Heart Mountain Irrigation District. They provided first, in the first email, they provide their requirements for water distribution plan. They also mentioned the water. Um, Water Association and a and a water master. Heart Mountain said will need to review and approve the plan. They also said the lots will be required to have sprinkled irrigation. In the second email, H um Heart Mountain confirmed a water distribution plan will be required. And they said that the subdivision will be subject to the Water Users Association bylaws. And you had a chance, of course, to see their comments, Madam Chair. North West Rural Water, they responded with the letter. They said they have the ability to provide service. T C T responded, they have wireless service available in the area. You might be able to provide internet and phone service. Postal Service said they will be able to provide mail. Should this go forward, Fire Protection District Number Two, they said they can provide fire protection. And they just, they sent us uh basically a list of the equipment that would be used should there be an emergency that they respond to. School District Number Six responded, saying that they will work to ensure any students living here will will um have bus service. The Park County Treasurer stated that property taxes are current. Y dot uh, or I'm sorry, uh Wyoming D E Q responded, basically providing agency contact should um a certain type of permit be required. Game and Fish responded, they have no concerns. But with this subdivision, but they are concerned with the number of proposed subdivisions. Weed and Pest responded, Mary conducted initial inspection, found noxious weeds, and she will require a long term weed uh weed management plan. And to my knowledge, that has not been, that plan has not been approved yet. Soil Conservation District, they provided a cover letter and a soils report. They found a number. Of different soils on each proposed lot, and they talked about. In their letter and in the report, they talked about the characteristics of those soils and any limitations that they have. And we basically summarized that bottom of page eight in our staff report. Public Works responded in the letter September fourteenth. They talked about uh legal access to the proposed proposed lots is via direct frontage from County Road two A B. And they also talked about frontage on County Road two C D. They talked about the propose, um, they talked about the access. That proposed lot one has to the north to two C D, and they talk about um a recorded easement was not. They also talk about, um, you see at the bottom of that first paragraph, top page nine. Public Works said proposed lot one and lot two both have permitted and approved accesses to County Road two A B. Also, Public Works reiterated no new roads are proposed. Other new accesses, of course, will have to have a right of way permit from them. They mentioned that proposed lot one does have that address from County Road two C D. And they the Public Works has no concerns with drainage or erosion control. Black Hills Energy responded. They confirmed lot one has natural gas and there's an existing main along the west side of Road two A B. And a service line to propose lot two can be installed once a structure is erected that will use natural gas. So Madam Chair, even though natural gas is not currently hooked up to propose lot two, and it's on the west side of Road two A B. Given that really Black Hills en- energy, I think, is hesitant to extend it to pros lot two. Our conclusion is natural gas is essentially. Sufficient.
Available.
Yeah, yeah, I know, and certainly available. Rocky Mountain Power, um, they've been notified that they've not provided a response. However, our understanding is that there is electricity at each to each of the proposed lots. And that that you see that in the um in the sketch plan. But we, again, we've not had an official response from Rocky Mountain Power, and I believe the the surveyor also confirmed that electricity is adjacent to each proposed lots. We've not received any public comments. Pre-application meeting occurred on July twenty eighth of this year. Of course, we received the application, the fees have been paid. We do have a title report for the property with a date of August eighth. No new roads are proposed. Solid waste is available from private carriers. And again, bottom of page ten, we mentioned Rocky Mountain Power has not responded. However, the surveyor has confirmed there are two separate Rocky Mountain um Rocky Mountain Power meters in place, one on each proposed lot. Black Hills Energy, I talked about that. We talked about T C T. We know of no hazards on the property. You saw the the revised sketch plan. Terms of wastewater requirements, there was a subsurface evaluation that was done on proposed lot two. Proposed lot one already has an existing septic. On proposed lot two, that per test. Had a range of perks from twenty to thirty minutes per inch. There was also an excavation cut done on that proposed lot. Ten feet, no groundwater was discovered. Our conclusion is that. Should this subdivision be approved and development occur? That conventional systems will likely be sufficient, conventional septic systems. Domestic water. Northwest Rural Water does provide water to propose lot one. Domestic water to propose lot two is. Is to be through a well, so we did ask them to collect a water sample. That occurred on August of this year and the address, the wells located twenty five Road two C D. The analysis concludes a water sample does meet the Safe Water um Safe Drinking Water Act because no uh caliform recola was found. Nitrogen nor lead nor arsenic, those things were not detected as well. T D S was reported. That's a high number, seventeen hundred parts per million. Really, the cutoff is five hundred. However, T D S is solids in the water. Can produce taste effects, smell effects, can produce cloudy water. But our conclusion is doesn't doesn't uh pose a so serious health threat threat. Sodium was detected at three ninety one. That's also relatively high. Um, our conclusion is here that concentrations over two hundred and fifty milligrams, this was at three ninety one. Can um impart a salty taste. And high levels of sodium um should be noted by people who are on low sodium doc uh diets. They might want to consult their physician. Ag impacts. Proposed lot two is is undeveloped irrigated cropland. In terms of egg impacts, our conclusion is the applicant will will need to comply with the requirements of weed and pest. But otherwise, the applicant is not proposing any change expected to impact neighboring ag properties or activities. This subdivision is not expected to cause further disturbances, weed development, pest litter or domestic pets. And of course, the app will be required to comply with the the any requirements of Heart Mountain Irrigation District. This property is not in an ag overlay district. Terms of water rights, we already mentioned it's in the Heart Mountain Irrigation District. Though, again, uh, a water distribution plan will be required, I believe, if I remember correctly, Heart Mountain said. They'll need to um comply with the Water Association agreements. Um, and comply with conditions, I believe, with a water master. No state review is required, is our conclusion, because it's a minor. Otherwise, this property is not in any other overlay district. Planning and zoning looked at this on September twenty first, recommended approval. They had conditions. One was a response. And of course, these are their recommended conditions. One was a response from the city of Cody. That condition has not been met. One was a inspection report and a long term noxious weed management plan be required. The inspection has been done. To to our knowledge, the weed management plan has not been approved. Typically, though, that's not required to be approved until um final plat. Is typically what how we're how Mary words it. Another one was a condition getting uh ru- reviewing recommendations from the Heart Mountain. Heart Mountain Irrigation District regarding the water distribution plan. We've not seen an approved plan. That condition's not been met. Another one was a condition recommended from Rocky Mountain Power regarding electricity. That condition has not been met. Madam Chair, we have a whole list of findings that we suggest uh you consider. Our recommendation is to approve this minor subdivision with the conditions. Listed below, we have nine. Would you? Would it be okay if I read them? Okay, I'll I'll be try to be brief and try to be quick, Madam Chair. Number one is, and again, our recommended conditions. Applicants shall provide all easements requested by applicable utilities in special districts, irrigation districts. Or public agencies providing services. The width of an easement shall be sufficient. To allow adequate maintenance of the system, but in no case shall any utilities be less than twenty feet width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. Number two, the applicant shall provide an approved long term noxious weed management plan. To the Planning and Zoning Department prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners. Number three, the applicant shall provide to the Planning and Zoning Department a review and recommendation from the Heart Mountain Irrigation District. Regarding the final water, um. The regarding the final water distribution plan. Prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners. Number four, the applicant shall place a note on the final plat that the lots are subject to the existing. Protective covenants is recorded under document number two thousand and three eighty six oh four. In the records of the Park County Clerk and Recorder. Number five, the applicant shall provide a response from Rocky Mountain Power to the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners. Number six, the applicant shall note on the final plat that the thirty foot wide. Number six, the applicant shall note on the final plat that the thirty-foot wide access easement serving the access addressed as four County Road two C D of proposed lot one is not insurable by title until an easement is conveyed and recorded. Number seven, the applicant shall place the following note on the final plat. Any proposed water wells on the subdivision lot shall be permitted by the Wyoming State Engineers Office prior to installation. Number eight is a final plat shall contain a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of nineteen ninety-one. And number nine is the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen five three oh six. And we're happy to answer questions that you might have.
Yeah, just a point of clarification here. On page eight, the response you got from the Cody Conservation District. This is basically the first time I've ever seen. I mean, in the past, whether whichever conservation district, they give us a soil report and that's all that they do.
Yeah.
And here they're actually telling us what they believe could and should not be done on the property. And I know the last paragraph, it says uh that the soil features are not favorable to septic tank absorption, but yet the perk test has it's in your opinion, it probably is. So my, my question is, how much weight should we put into this? I mean, this is the first time I've ever seen this.
Yeah, that kind of language.
Yeah.
And, and as you know, uh Madam Chair and Commissioner Tilden, I, you know, to me, the different conservation districts will have different wording and Cody does kind of their, their own wording. Um, I, you know, I, I think my explanation for that is those soils reports, my understanding can be kind of general. But yet, the soil subsurface evaluation that we had done, if those numbers are correct, was done in, in a particular place. And I, I guess I would think I would put more weight on those numbers, if they're correct, than maybe on the, the, a kind of a general soils report from the conservation district. Not that they don't, they didn't do, I'm not saying they didn't do a, a good job. But my understanding is those soils reports tend to be kind of general or general area.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what we've always gotten in the past and this is getting fairly specific.
Yes.
And lots, I would also add that lot one is, is already uh already has a residence and a septic system on it. Um, which is kind of in the, getting closer to the part that they mentioned. Along the southern edge is the exception. So it would be more favorable there. And then lot two um it's moderate, moderately favorable for septic tank.
Well, I mean, I guess where I'm coming from is we live in such a litigious society these days. And if we get this as a report where they say, you know, you, you maybe not build a house with a basement or you can't have a house with a basement, depending on which lot you're on. And something happens in the construction process. If we sign off on this, are we liable?
I, Madam Chair, Commissioner Tilden, I, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
I don't know.
But again, I, my, my view is the soils report tend to be general in nature. And, and accurate to the extent they can be given their general, generality.
Maybe, well, I'm, I'm, I'm probably just overthinking it. I've just never seen that before. I don't.
Mr. Chair. Never mind, okay. Um, this is a public hearing, so are there any public comments?
Sure.
Sorry.
Yes. I have a property just north of two, two C Ds that average thirty-one. Just more to that property. I don't see a problem and I have no objections to the subject.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Corey Schott, Engineering Associates, Representative of the App Camp. Be able to have, happy to answer any questions that you guys may have, but that septic system's been in there for a while and it works, so. I agree with him that the soil conservation is the general area, they use soil maps. They don't actually go out and explore each of those spots like we have.
I mean, that's what we've always gotten in the past, they analyze the soil map and say this one here.
Yeah, there's still is always a, a issue of buyer beware that they might find something out there. It's the buyer's issue.
Okay.
And yeah, Rocky Mountain Power hasn't answered us back, but there is two meters, one to the house and one he runs the pump for the irrigation for all the fill. So if, when it switch over, they would have to change that, that meter from an agricultural meter to a residential meter on lot two. And I'm assuming they'll answer us just like everything else, they're with Vivy at the end of the year and then we fly back. We even reached out again today just to see, have her back on that.
Any other public comment?
Okay, Lee, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the O F E M F sixty-nine sketch plan with conditions noted by staff.
Okay.
They moved and seconded to approve with conditions as listed. Any further discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay. Fast.
Thank you. Twenty twenty-three ninety-six.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Bill.
Nice to see you.
See you later.
Thanks Molly.
Today's action.
Maybe we ought to get the HBAC we're going in here.
Sooner rather than later.
I can help.
Yeah, that's probably true. I think we're close enough time wise that we can go ahead and get started with our afternoon agenda. And on that agenda is the Park County Library Design Plan Presentation for the Powell Library. And I'm assuming GSG Architects are here. They've been working with us for a little over a year. And I know some of the library board members are here also that have been working on the plan and our library director Karen. So we'll go ahead and if you'd like to get started, that'd be great. And then we'll have an opportunity to talk about it.
She said I'm from GSG Architecture.
We might ask you to use the mic. I know that's you've got your back to them, but we're going to have to have the mic.
Sit. Okay. That's better. Okay. So as, as you mentioned, from GSG Architecture in Sheridan, Wyoming. My name's Dan Behrens, Licensed Architect in Wyoming, Colorado. I've got about 15 minute presentation, 15, 20 minutes and then open for questions or you can ask, stop me anytime and ask questions.
Okay.
So my role on the project is architect, project architect. We had. We started up this project with a level one study with cost estimate. That was, that was our scope of work. And when we started the project, it was based on the Minja's study of a study that studied the growth of. Studied the growth of the community and, and that, that was done in 2019. As we went through that process, we prepared several iterations of the design. We, and we also, the design also evolved as the, we learned more about the board of the library board's needs going forward. We explored several phasing options to try to work with within the budget to. Kind of break things up into, into smaller chunks that we could do. Kind of incrementally. We also studied the potential for all new construction. But the conclusion of our report is that we were trying to get it all in done in one phase. That just makes it a more efficient construction process. Because you don't have to mobilize several times and it kind of resolves in kind of less. Of a downtime for the, for the facility. And so what we, the end product is doubling the square footage that they currently have in the existing building. And the, so what we ended up with is the best, this is what I'm presenting is the best possible design solution. This is kind of the ideal design. It's plan A. This is if. This is, you know, the ultimately what, what all, meeting all of the needs from the study and from the board. The top priorities that were identified were providing crucial community gathering space and improved children's area. So those, those were major factors in how we approached the design. The, this in resolve is similar to in size and in complexity to other libraries and in, in communities of this size, including like Buffalo or Sheridan. So it's really kind of bringing this library up to, to par with other communities. I'll go ahead and start this with the walk through and I don't know if everybody can see that. Okay. But the lights, we might want to hit the lights. That might help a little bit because these, that's better in case you kind of see the colors a little better. So I'll go ahead and start with the exterior improvements and repairs. So they identified repairs to this. Well, let me just step back for a second. This is Clark Street and we're, we're kind of above the parking lot looking at the buildings from a bird's eye view where the middle school is. This is Clark and this is third. And so the, as we started looking at the project, we did notice that there's a major improvement to the street corner where this jets out. So that was part of the rationale for really addressing that corner now with, with this design of a new entry. So. That was identified as a major need. To have this. Entry with, and especially when you have, where this building is located, it's kind of a node between the downtown and the, the middle school. There's also, we're working that we recognize some needs on repairing the roof in this area. And also just bringing the entire facade up and upgrading the entire facade. And also wrapping that around and, and integrating it with the new two story addition. So this is the existing building now and it's, it's a brick clad building. And then this, from this point over this way is all new construction, the new construction, two stories. So all, all around here, we, we, we maximize the use of this outdoor space. There's ramp for accessibility, another entry on the side to the new portion. And then a, and also outdoor connection from this area here, which would be the proposed conference room and multipurpose room. Materials we selected were metal panels. Cow wall is a kind of a translucent panel that would let a lot of light come through, but it keeps the rain off. So it, it kind of make, it makes it a nice inviting entry. And then masonry to match the existing structure to tie it all in. Real quick on here, this is the site plan. So this, this is a little bit out of it, out of date. Aerial photo, photograph, but as you can see, we took the existing block and we're really filling it all in, maximizing the use of that block space. And we, as far as parking, there were just a few spots, a few, a space for a few parking spaces here that are accessible and could be. And we, as far as parking, there were just a few spots, a few, a space for a few parking spaces here that are accessible and could be for staff parking. And we followed up with the city on this, this, the parking situation and there, there's enough parking on the off street to accommodate the library facility. Again, that, that's Third Street and that's Clark. I'll go now to the main level floor plan. Move this up a little closer. The main level floor plan and the. It's a little bit difficult to read some of these tags because they're, they're kind of small on this, on this screen. But the idea being here that, that this is the renovated, the existing building looks like this now. And. The first. Part of this would be that renovating this existing facility and providing this new entry area. It's kind of a raised entry. Into the facility with the, a new circulation desk here and self check areas here. And we also have in that, in that lobby, the fireplace that was historic fireplace that was there to begin with. And just moved from this area over to this area to put that in display, but to have a nice entry that's kind of inviting and welcoming and kind of cozy when it's cold out. So that's the renovated area. We, we've included the office areas or stay sort of where they're at already. But we, as you can see, it kind of extended all this area for stacks and materials that can be checked out. The, we added a smaller computer area here. And then a book sale area here that has connection to, to the new part. So, so as we looked at this connection to the new, the new construction, we wanted to open this all up. As much as possible to kind of extend the feeling when you're coming in of this area all being open and an open stairway to the upper part of the two story level. So this would be the extent of the new construction that we're proposing. And I mean, another entry here, and then we, we have to have an egress door here on this side. But this would be, these, these would be doors that could come roll down and. Close off the rest of the library for after hours meetings and in this area, which is, would be the meeting room area. And so this would be about an 80 or more. Attendee meeting area with, that's multipurpose for lots of different functions. And then there's support spaces, the restrooms, the. Crafts area and a storage area. So that is all accessible after hours. And then there's a break room, a staff break room in this area. Moving to the upstairs area, we have the, this, the open stair up this way and the elevator here, restrooms. And this is a kind of a children's area lobby into the children's area. So it's greatly expanded children's area from what is there now. And then over in this area, teen area. And then in the center here is an office to, to be watching each area. So that's part of, part of the design was just being able to have the administration. A minimal number of administrators watching the maximum amount of space in this. As it's operating. And this, this area was kind of a fun area. Well, I'll kind of circle back to that at the end here, but the entry to the children's area. And just real quick on this part is the existing basement that they have as book sales now. Would just be, this would end up being staff access only. That we, we're removing the existing elevator that is kind of having issues right now. Some needs a little bit of repair. So we're removing that and adding the new elevator for the two story part would also come down into the, and have access to the, this basement for bringing. Materials down for storage and, and this is mechanical space as well down there. Not a lot of change down there. So these are the elevations, south elevation with that covered entry. And then new metal cladding on this area that kind of projects out. This is the existing brick that's there now. It's in, in good shape. The east elevation that's facing on Clark Street. We really, that was the elevation. We really wanted to. Make it look really nice on this, for this, for the community to see the, kind of the new, how the new library. Looks from. From Clark. And then this is the north elevation, which is kind of, has a lot of north light coming through. And then the west elevation is the, that back area was where there's some parking and access here for egress. And then that's the existing building. So again, some overviews of the exterior, how it would all kind of come together into a kind of unified design whole. And how we're just outside of that conference room, there'd be access to an exterior patio. This is egress and access, ADA access and then ADA access to this, to the main doors. This is that back area with the. Parking, staff parking and ADA access here. For the, this is the front with Third Street and Clark, the new entry from above. Have another angle view of the. The side. Again, more views, another view of the kind of connection to the outdoors from the meeting area. And then this would be that kind of new main, our new entry on the side entry from Clark. More views of that, this is just focusing in more on this covered entry area. And then the corner of Third and Clark, so really trying to activate this corner. Really trying to address that connection. This is just a view of the, the back part of it with the, the new access here, ADA access and egress route. And then we've got some. Main inch, rendering of a main entry lobby where the, the desk was shown and the historic fireplace side here. And really trying to kind of preserve that historic nature of the space, but also trying to modernize it. So we have kind of clouds here that are above, lighting above the, the new desk. And then here are just some, some fun ideas on the children's area, a small kind of child sized door. And then these sort of oversized books, sort of flanking the entry and read a book on top saying children's area. So we were just kind of looking at some fun ideas there. Kind of make that area inviting for children. So, and so that's kind of the, all of the walkthrough of the design. But the other, some of the other factors were, we looked at some sustainability, resource conservation and efficiency. So we, we've explored some ideas of solar power that could maybe pay for itself over time. And, and then also possibly having a, like kind of a dashboard that the public could kind of see how it's paying for itself. Or see that there's solar access to a place to plug in that has, that is dedicated for the solar array. So some, looked at some options like that as well.
As you bring that up with utilities, of course, the county does have the, the charge of paying the utility bills and those types of things for the libraries. With additions like this, with today's technology, would you expect? I know the utilities are going to be up no matter what we do, just because of the nature of utilities. But would you think that this new addition, new format with the library would cost a whole lot more? In the future in utilities than if we just had the existing building? Or do you see new efficiencies that'll help us with that?
I definitely see new efficiencies with that. We can insulate the exterior walls and roof. Better, which is, that's always a, a good strategy.
It's not very well done now.
Yeah, exactly. Initial strategy because there, there are leaks and.
Okay.
It's, and also we looked at replacing some of the glass, the storefront and windows. That are there now are not highly efficient either. So those were things that we looked at as well. And then the, a whole new, the report kind of outlines the technical details on the, on renovating the entire HVAC system. So putting new, new rooftop units that are going to be higher efficiency than what's there now.
Okay. Thank you.
So any other questions or input?
Comments, questions? Some in question?
Just the, the idea of putting the kids upstairs, worked at other libraries was fine.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at both options and that was something that we weighed heavily. But upstairs has some advantages in that if they're kind of contained, they're not going to sort of wander off. You kind of know where they are, but also just how the, how it was. Our library, the new addition was put together because the meeting level, the meeting space being on the main level is important for accessibility for the community. And egress for a large number of people in the space, getting everybody out. So. That, that was part of it. We, we did initially look at having an outdoor area for the kids, play area. But that was kind of went back to a little bit more to safety about keeping them contained in there. So we, we did look at both options and I, I think at the end, that was, that was a sort of one that was difficult. Decision to make, but it made sense given all the other components. But it could certainly be something that, that we look at going forward. It's, it's certainly an, another, an option.
I guess one other question, you talked about openness and administration. I guess this is probably more a question for Karen. But as we look at doing something like this and spreading things out a little bit. Do you see that causing a need for? More employees or is it being set up in a manner that it can be monitored and taking care of the way it needs to be? Basically with the number of staff that we have.
Yeah, current staff now, right now, we can manage. And they were key to openness.
Okay.
Right now, children and some of the other areas will separate. So you have to have more hands on there. So proud it gets. And middle school kids after school requires more staff in a congested area, but having it more open. And having, I think, too designated area for middle school teen kids next to the children's area. That you can rely actually on the staff there to oversee and promote. So yeah, I think we've got staff now by the way, the numbers we have.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from the commissioners?
I guess I'd open it up if anybody had any input or questions or concerns at this point.
Well. The design, we, we did look at that during the design and, and because we, there were several options for what to do with it. And, and at one point we're looking at that as maybe upgrading the basement and having it a public area with the book sale, keeping the books at there. Or potentially maybe that would be an area for more staff. But what we ended up with is saying that's going to be kind of more of just the basement storage area for the staff. And those, those issues there, because there's issues down there, we did not want to make that. Let's say the tech center, when you have computers down there or the, or the, even the paper, you have other books stacked. So we're, we're really kind of trying to still use that space, but doing very minimal. Yeah. And, and the really the water issue, there's, there's no water table allowed. So there's water in that area. I'm sure it's seasonal. And that's why it's kind of intermittent, but there's also pumps to, to eject the water. And so really you're relying on those pumps. So that's why we, when we have a situation like that, we, we tend to try to not put things there that is going to be. No, unfortunately, there's really not a way to address the water. It's, I mean, I should say it's not, if there's always an answer, but it's very, very expensive to, you have to sort of excavate all the way around to get down in there. And put bit night around the outside and you, and by the time you spend a lot of money, there are no guarantees that the water is not going to find a way. Yeah. And so we, you know, it's just an unfortunate part of the site. And there's a lot of wonderful things about the site. And I'd make it very much worth eating because it's a very area of town. I love how we look at that one.
Well, I had the water issue a little bit. I'm just, I'm on board. We had an engineering survey done and we look for water and it is an issue with water table there. It's really high in experience. So what Dan says is right, not using the basement for primers. But, but our working with the engineer said that when creating pumps and just redo that something on there, we should be able to do this problem.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And as my understanding on that, the water issue is because the elevator, elevator shaft being below grade. Is there a different, are you looking at a different design on elevator or are you still going to be going below grade?
Still going below grade. Yep. Wait, because the new elevator would need to access that area.
But, but the mechanics, do the mechanics then of all elevators have to go below grade or, or is there a different design that allows it to be above?
That's correct. Yeah. It's a different design. It's a machine roomless elevator, attraction elevator. So it, that doesn't have a machine room like the current one does.
Okay. So it does, it does not have to go below the floor.
Not, not the machinery of it. The, the elevator does go down below grid to.
Well, yeah, it goes down to the basement floor, but, but the mechanics of the old one go below the basement.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm getting that.
That's, yeah, the mechanics of the old one will be removed. The new one will not have mechanics in, in the base.
So you, by, by not having that going below the, the floor of the basement, you, you should be able to alleviate some of the water issues.
Definitely. Yeah.
Get that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
For that. Yep.
Any other thoughts? Okay. With that, I, Pat, if I understand. Today's process and what we're looking at is whether we move forward with. Building plans.
Absolutely. That's what we are now. It's a pretty limited term of when you have junior Florida. And as most everyone here knows, there's possibility of some funding used to. Could be so stand of moving that possible. We issue here for stairs. And that's what we're talking about in this next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll be reviewing all of this and coming back to the Mr. And that one. If there's anything, any input. We're all welcoming all ideas and really.
Okay.
Absolutely. A lot of kind of funding towards to drive the problem next. That's probably the idea that we know to each funding this program and levels. That will be pretty good. The engineering, the trial plans and then contract with somebody with full of these. Abdominaling this. Loop construction of that. Construction phase, that's all we hit. Get back to the program or get to the budgets. Because sometimes if learning sources, if you look at that, things are too shallow ready, that's changes. So just curious if you have those conversations with.
Yeah. And we actually, from the seat, we, we part. With what we got.
Sort of the word maybe part based on this.
Right.
Okay.
To program. They consider this as. Even though it's not actually. But I, I mean, what they are looking at in developments around the state. Other entities that might be competing with this. Other entities that might be competing with this. Is being, I guess, more trouble ready than anybody else. And they're looking at.
Amazing.
Okay, so that makes us back running into again. We have funds and then to be able to pay through the design, so then. Which is the next. Getting the movement solved. That's the next step. That's what we do. After that. So we want to break this down because we want to have anything. So the need to have them ready to go in order to meet that.
Oh, that's what.
Yeah.
I could say ideally that's all.
I think the state funds are our money, which puts it in the twenty-four to twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four and twenty-six timeframe. So.
We're, because money is running.
Okay, so we can look forward to hearing from you in a month or so after this meeting. Couple of weeks.
Well, next week, next Thursday, something.
Okay, so right after.
So very shortly thereafter. Because I just.
I think we're leaving it in your hands. I know there's. Some options out there and, and maybe if, if. Brian has some ideas as far as. Construction scenarios that may work. GSG may have some ideas on construction scenarios, you know, whether it's construction manager at risk or how you move forward. Depending on the funding. Then, yeah, we can all get together on that at some point if everybody's on the same page with conceptual. Where we're at. Okay. I'm not hearing any negative. So. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's another step. With that, commissioners were done today?
Yes. Move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Moved the second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to pose? Okay.
It's nice. I mean, it'd be a neat addition to the.
So. They with this, their plans.
No.